Please lead us to the flag.
Let's lead us to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm about to retire here for a quick prayer for you, sir. Your heavenly Father, thank you for all the meaningful lessons that you have provided for me, this whole room of people, and our whole community. As you lead us through our different paths in life, different paths, help us to be more forgiving, and more adjusting to life, and help us to be more a Christian people, and ask these things of Jesus Christ in the name, I pray, amen. Okay, and meeting minutes required, the motion to approve the first minutes from August twenty first, the motion.
I'll make a motion, we will approve the minutes from August twenty first.
Take it, all in favor? All right. We got citizens' concerns, three minutes per person, Mr. Anthony Ford, you're on the agenda.
Yes, Chairman, Town Council. And I business, my concern is on the hilltop, okay, we have torn down historical market, mark as far as I'm concerned, and my concern is with hurricane season and everything, what are we doing, what is the town doing, to make sure that the citizens are safe in the event that we have a hurricane? Because we know that that debris can fly around like missiles, and I have, you know, my mama there, and I'm very concerned about that, it's been awhile now, I know it's been torn down awhile now, you know, been patient about it, but I think we need to find out how's it gonna get moved, what's the plan, which direction we headed? Are we gonna set it on fire, burn it, or what, what we gonna do with that?
Well, in my opinion, this is on, it's on the home, the owner of the property that is removing it, and it was in the minutes of October before my turn to it be tore down, repaired, or whatever, so. The lady did get a permit, she come and said she wanted to tear it down, that was on her, said she didn't have the money to repair it, so she tore it down. And now she still got permit for the removal of the rest of it, but I don't know if she's got the money to do it all now, or what, so. That's on her.
How long is the, what's the dates on the permit?
I'm not sure, you know what the dates are?
When you get a permit, it's a hundred and eighty days, so they get six months, I don't have the exact date off the top of my head right now for the expiration, I can, I can look at that and get that back to you. But she got that back in, it's been probably, what, two months now, so she would probably have another four months left on that.
Okay, so, at the end of that four month, what's, what's the plan?
If she doesn't, um, doesn't do anything with that, there's a policy in place, an ordinance with the town, that she has to follow certain guidelines, if she does not follow those guidelines, that's in that ordinance, then she will be fined X amount of money per day until it's cleaned up.
Okay, so now, that brings me back to hurricane season, the safety, I'm talking about the safety of our citizens. I mean, is the town concerned about that?
We're concerned all the time of safety of the town.
You can't make her clean up her own property, she got a certain time to do it. I mean, she can't help, God sends a storm here to blow debris around, I mean, she can't help that, and, you know, we can't make her do it even faster than what she got permit for.
Okay, so, we're not gonna do anything, we're not concerned about hurricane season and that debris blowing around?
We can't, as, as the council, we can't touch it, that's her property unless she gives us permission.
Okay, I understand that.
So we will have to ask her if someone can help her with it, if she's willing to let citizens, or the town, or something like that, um, help clean it up, then that's gonna be on the individual that decides to clean it up.
Right, and that, and that's what I'm getting at, I'm coming to you guys for, are we asking those questions? As the town council, are we asking those questions? You know, and from what I'm getting right now, because we emailed, you know, y'all know I was coming to get on this, I would, I was hoping I would get more like dates and, you know, the ordinance numbers and stuff like that, but I'm not getting that.
Okay, let, let, let me interrupt you for a second, okay, if we go down there and say, okay, we're the town, clean up, 'cause there's a storm coming. Okay, there's four or five more properties gonna be tore down too, then they gonna look at the town, hey, look, y'all hauled off the hilltop, you gotta haul off mine, haul off mine too. And, you know, we're, we're not capable of doing that, 'cause that's their property, but they're responsible for removing their own property.
She actually has been sent a letter in the past week to find out what her next steps are, she's supposed to be supplying that to us, but she has not done that. Um, we have tried to contact her by phone, her number has been disconnected. We have been attempting to try to contact her weekly.
So, now we back, well, I'm saying we kicking the can down the road, back again, now. I know there's a hurricane, there's, there's a storm brewing out there now, all right, possibly coming this way, all right? If it reach, you know, if it comes in, that pile of heat is gone, it's going everywhere, and we know that. And it's gonna hit the houses that are around it, and that's for my concern, you know? So, all I'm asking is, we need to expedite this a little bit more, I, I mean, the town need to come up with something, look at the ordinance, adjust the ordinance, or whatever we need to do, when it comes to stuff like this and safety, okay, there's error on the side of safety.
Do you know if anybody's seen or spoken to her?
I don't even know who it is.
We do, I don't get in contact with her, because she, she's not the type of person that just wanna leave it.
Right, I mean, what, I mean, it, it would help me out, find out what, what help does she need, now, I know some of it, but I, what help does she need, and then as a town, can we get that assistance?
As citizens, we can help her.
Right, okay, thank you. Thank you, that's all I, I'm good right there, I'm good, that's, that's all I needed to know right there, as citizens, we can help.
Well, you know, it ain't that we wouldn't want the help, Anthony, I mean, you know, we, this little town ain't rich, and we just can't just go do for one, and then, we can't do for y'all, 'cause we do it for them, you gotta do for everybody, everywhere. So if you do for one, I mean, there's yards here that need to be cut, because the homeowners don't cut them. But if I tell my guys, go, hey, go down there and cut that yard for the people down there, 'cause they don't cut the yard, guess what, I gotta cut half the people in town's grass, 'cause they quit cutting them, so we can cut.
And before you can do anything, you have to have the person who owns the property's permission, you can't own the property without the permission.
Yeah, 'cause we own their property, and if somebody gets hurt, then we're liable for that.
A lot of them just can't do that.
So, I mean, you gotta do it to the laws and stuff like that, you know, you wanna be fair to everybody and do the favor the right way.
But we have not neglected trying to get into it.
No, we have been on the ball about that, we really have. Okay, Ms. Lynn, you, uh, you got some time here too.
Okay, thank you, so Vic and I just wanted to present the gateway project for the town, that's going down Richard Temple Boulevard, um, let me check, I have it written wrong, which would be right here, the trees where the crape myrtles are diseased. Um, and then the mohuligas, we had, um, the FFA, what is it?
FFA.
Thank you, FFA, um, grow from seed, the mohuligas, so we've got, how much of the mohuligas, I'll let Vic tell you about.
Okay, I'll pass these out here right quick, make some progress, we'll be good. Right now, I've, I've got them at home, I've been taking care of, but so far as the mullein grass, we've got two hundred and nine of them, or two hundred and eight of them right now. But, um, but what I've got figured out so far, is that we have a total of six hundred. Um, so, there's a purchase of three hundred and ninety-two more, um, in order to complete the project, that's all of down Richard Temple Boulevard, and that little section there about four points, two as well. So, um, if you look at the diagram on page two, um, don't pay any attention to the drawing, but, you know, you see the trees, and I've got four rows, um, of mullein grass that we wanna plant down in the center of it. Okay, and the mullein grass, it turns into like a little pinkish reddish color in the fall, mine have already started, um, so I think that would look really nice. Um, so far as the tree that I, uh, recommend is the, um, the bald cypress tree, because it ties in with the mill pond, and it's not nothing that'll stand out, and it doesn't go with, or fit the town, and I think it would look good to, um, to plant the bald cypress trees down the Boulevard, and, and kind of remove these crape myrtles, 'cause they've been there for years and years, and they're starting to look pretty bad, and they've been, threw up, chopped up pretty, pretty good. Several reasons for the bald cypress tree, you know, it's no maintenance whatsoever, since, you know, the guys say busy enough, this is something that they will not have to touch, they will not have to prune these trees, they just let them grow naturally, they grow around three to four feet a year. So they'll grow pretty quickly, um, and another thing is, once they shed their leaves, well, it's, it's a, it's a needle actually, so once the, uh, the needles turn brown and fall off, it just blends right in with the pine straw. So if we've got the mullein grass planted all down the center of it, four rows all down the center, and those needles fall, it'll just blend in with the pine straw. You know, so, there's, there's no maintenance whatsoever that these guys will have to do, the only thing I'd recommend that they would have to do, is so far as the mullein grass is like, cut it at the end of the winter, you know, just kind of trimming down, so in the spring, when it comes up, it's all the dead grass is gone, 'cause it's just been cut up. Um, but, another reason, uh, for the bald cypress tree is when the needles do shed, it's a perfect Christmas tree shape. So it would be perfect to decorate for, for the, um, Christmas on the Boulevard, you know, put strings, the lights on, 'cause it makes a perfect Christmas tree. And if you look on page, I think it's, page five or page six, no, I think it's page five. There's a picture of it, yeah, yeah, page five, with, it got kind of chopped off on the top, but you can see the top of that, I mean, you can see the shape of the tree, it's a perfect Christmas tree shape, so.
So it grows like that without pruning it?
Yeah, you don't have to do anything to it, this is the one that's actually in my yard that I took a picture of, and I don't have to do anything to it, so it perfectly just, you know, and I've done a study on it, because one of mine actually broke off in the center, which is the main stem.
Yes.
But what it did, is it branched out another one and went straight up, and it made, and it'll reshape itself, so if it gets damaged, it'll reshape itself back into that, yeah, and I've got one in the front yard that actually did that, it took about three years, 'cause it started about midway, it branched out, and started growing up, because you got to have a leaf branch, and that's just how they grow. So it's a perfect tree for the Boulevard, like I say, you can, even when the, when it's there, when it sheds its needles, it's something that you can decorate for Christmas, for Christmas on the Boulevard, 'cause it'll make a perfect Christmas tree shape. And then with the mullein grass all down, four rows down between each tree, because you wanna plant these trees about forty feet apart, you know, so they won't, we don't want them to grow in together, so if you plant them about forty feet apart, then you've got this pretty, um, mullein grass down in the center, and you straw it, and you'll just have grass on each side, so about the width of them more, so you can just run down one side with one more, down the other side, and everything, that'll just stays the same, so it's just a lot of less maintenance. Um, now, I still have my, uh, my landscaping license, so I have a, a, a business account at Plants Direct. So on page four, um, when I went out and see how many trees we need, it's actually about sixteen of them, um, and that's planting at forty feet apart. Um, at my price, I can get them for ninety dollars a piece. Now, if you go to Plants Direct and look at those trees, and they're about eight feet, anywhere from between seven to eight feet tall, they run about two hundred and sixty-nine dollars a piece. So, and I can get them for, um, for ninety dollars a piece, so, that'd be something I'd be willing to do, is, is to go and get this stuff. Uh, and so far as the mullein grass, I can get those in a one gallon, and get those for four dollars a piece.
Which is cheap, I mean, they're like twenty-eight dollars a gallon, just from the mohuligas. And then we have the FFA that'll help us plant and do all that stuff too, as a project with the school.
So they've grown some from seed?
They've already done it, we have, we have eleven flats.
And those are the two hundred and eighty some that you have?
Yeah, well, two, yeah, two hundred and eight, two hundred and nine of them, I've got at the home, at home, I've been taking care of, and so.
Okay, and then how much do that, how many do they have, do y'all know how many they have?
What do you mean?
Or those are the ones?
Those are the ones, yeah, they've already done the project.
They start off with seeds, and we've got them up now, about this tall, I keep trimming them and cutting them back, so they will get thicker, that's what I'm trying to do, because if you go out there and plant them now, you probably will be concealed when you put them in the, in the straw, you know, so. I keep trimming, I've already trimmed them twice, so, but I'm, I'm taking care of them, watering them, keeping them pruned, you know, to get them to that size. The problem that we're running into is they're in little cups right now, so, it's fine right now, because, you know, everything's gonna go on, so nothing's gonna be growing, but next year, when the springs are around April, when they start back, it's growing cycle, um, they're not gonna last long in that cup, so we do need to get them planted as quickly as we can, because it'll be a waste, I'd be, you know, two hundred and nine plants gone to waste, because they'll die in those little cups, because what'll happen is they'll get root out, and so, um, they'll end up dying, so. If you have any questions about anything that I could answer, um.
This is also part of the project, um, like you, being with tree project, I have a couple of them. My printer was acting up, so, I'm just gonna look at it, thank you. Deeply rooted, rising together, one tree, one marker, one story. Your family deserves a place in late youth history, plant a tree that will stand for them and with them forever. So we're asking for like a contribution of a hundred and eighty dollars, that includes the, the plaque, which is on the second page, um, with the family's name engraved, so that it covers everything.
So you just have to advertise this to see if any families were interested?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yeah, I don't know, do we get any grants for trees? I know at one time, we talked about that in council, did you?
Yeah, I would, I'll get with you.
Okay, that sounds good. And, I mean, these trees too, what we don't use, we can use in other places, down in the mill pond, we can use it at town square, you know, they're just different places too, so, I mean, if we have a hundred, two hundred people that need a tree, we can probably find places for that around town, right? Okay, we'll just leave it, yeah.
And so far as, you know, whether this gets approved or not, and if it does, you know, there, um, there's kind of, so far as getting the Boulevard prepared for the trees and the grass, uh, because the trees need to be up, and then this grass needs to be killed, that's down in the middle where we wanna plant the mullein grass, because it is a grass, so, if you plant it and all the grass is not, you know, we don't get it killed and get, you know, get up, it starts, you know, growing back, if these guys go to try to spray it, they gonna kill all the mullein grass, because it's a grass too. So, you know, it's something that, you know, we, you know, if it was to get approved, it'd be something that'd be good to start maybe like the last of April, or the first of May, that'd be a good time to plant and do that, but so far as right now, would be a good time to be getting, uh, the Boulevard prepared for, so far as removing the grass, killing it or whatever, and getting the trees up and the roots up, you know, and just, you know, try to get it tilted really good and refined down the center of it, and then we can plant these trees in the mullein grass, and then go from there. And I think it would, would look really good down the, down the Boulevard, because like I say, the mill pond's full of those trees. You know, and, you know, they got moss hanging in them, and it looks really good, so it'll tie in with the town, it wouldn't be, you know, nothing, you know, that just doesn't fit in, so.
So you have what y'all that rest on for Christmas on the Boulevard?
Well, you don't have to do it right now. Well, like, take it to the after, yeah, yeah, 'cause, you know, because you're looking, yeah, yeah, we don't wanna mess it up right now for Christmas. You know, this is a project, you know, if you wanna start planting, it needs to be around May, the first of May, you don't wanna get into June, July, and August, it's too hot, because those guys really have to stay out here and keep it watered then, so. So, yeah, it can, it can, yeah, we don't wanna mess it up for Christmas.
But this is a project that's low cost, high impact, it'll make a huge difference, you know, and we're talking about going all the way past four points, down that little synergy, right in there, and planting on up.
It's really pretty, it makes it really pretty.
Especially when they blow them, going all down there, and it'd be just a, uh, a whole row of ink, as you're probably now, for there in the fall.
All right, we need to move on, but I appreciate your information. Okay, so, the events committee, the chair, Ms. King, will you, um, go over what you got listed up here?
We have a want going on, we have a want now. Um, we are loomdy and above a guy. Um, I scheduled for Christmas on the Boulevard, they are not available for Harvest Festival. And we didn't get to find out if we handed anybody up yet, I'm still looking, but they are scheduled for Christmas. I have flyers for everyone, and anybody else that would like any flyers to take on with them. Harvest Festival is Saturday, October twenty-fifth, from two to seven, and Trump or Treat is from five to seven. Um, so we're looking for anybody that would like to set up a trunk, and hand out candy for the kids. Um, so, if anybody would like to take any flyers with them, there's Trump or Treat flyers and Harvest Festival flyers. Take home with you.
You know, what time does the harvest start?
Harvest is two to seven, and trunk is five to seven. I have seven people on the list, it's in the, I'll have to get that printer for you, in the printer, I have, uh, seven people signed up for vendors so far, for Harvest. And, um, and then Brittany's gonna make phone calls.
I need a copy of her news too. Um, we've got the Christmas on the Boulevard, we're having two.
Okay, all right, so if you got that, Clark Ayers, you can start finding some of them.
All departments are under the twenty-five percent mark, we're just finishing up first quarter. At the end of your financial report there, you'll see the expenses listed for those that we paid out for the repair on the drain box, and donations that we made to the victims advocate for the carehouse. That we paid out of the victim advocate fund. Have you seen her, anything to check?
All right, all right, for those deals, um, tomorrow, we're gonna have our, um, groundbreaking ceremony for the town square, up there on the lot that, um, the church donated for us, so, um, I think that's gonna be at six o'clock, six o'clock tomorrow.
Yep.
Yep. Okay, um, so, Ayers is gonna do demolition for us, 'cause he was a lot cheaper than anybody else, and, um, the landfill, Amanda talked to him, and they gonna, they agreed to do it for a twenty-eight, um, dollars a ton. So, and real cheap, 'cause if it's me or you carrying, it's gonna be a lot more than that, so she talked to him, and they agreed to do it for twenty-eight dollars per ton. So, some of it we're gonna put in the road going down to the, uh, yard, because the road's washing out, and, um, me to keep the erosion from keep washing over and over, and we wanna buy brick, we can put the rock in there, and the dirt on top of it, we got two piles of dirt back there. So, that'll be taken care of. So, that's all the old business, and now the new business, and the ordinance twenty, twenty-five dash eight dash twenty-one eight, I mean, it took up business license ordinance in the town let you update. The class schedule is required by Acts one seventy-six of twenty twenty, required to adopt by local government by December to twenty twenty-five, and I require, request a motion to adopt.
Excuse me, could you make a write on what that is?
This is just the business licenses, every year, we have to adopt the schedule that shows, that comes from the municipal association, saying what codes are associated with which, which business type category. So it's just saying, say, that, you know, that N A I C S code that's established per your category of business, it's that schedule.
Well, you put it on, on the website, so people can see it, like, look at this stuff.
Uh, yeah, I can, I can, or I can email to you.
But this is the second reading, so do I have a motion?
Yes, I make a motion that we.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Can you put it on the website, so like, private businesses will know what they need to do?
Sure.
Okay, all right, on ordinance one fifty-five, an ordinance to acquire the maintenance of building frontings facing along Main Street, Richard Temple Boulevard, and other previous or historical characters to appearance of the, of town, and I request a motion to approve the title on this reading. And that's, uh, all the buildings, if, just say if you had a building you tore it down on Main Street, if you tear it down, you gotta fix it back so it'll match what's there, so you have to brick it. If you were to put a metal building or something, then you need to put some brick or something on the front, kind of tie it in with the town.
The other places, the other historical places, what, what would that be?
Well, this is like on Main Street.
Only?
I guess, I mean, wherever else we're referring to.
I mean, I was asking you.
Well, I mean, that's the only business we have, like, in town pretty much, on Main Street, and everything else is like older updated buildings, so.
This is specified Main Street, not anywhere else in town.
But anyway, do I have a motion, ask this?
Yes, I make a motion that we approve the ordinance one fifty-five.
That's second, all in favor? All right, now, an ordinance one fifty-four dash, uh, point fifty regarding the use of tiny homes and storage buildings as residence. Required a motion to approve by title only on the first reading. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Access purchases, um, exclusion of inflatable, um, purchases of rentals, liabilities, revenue fees, et cetera.
So we're not gonna do, um, inflatables, I don't think it would be good for us, because the insurance would be way too high, and, um, the liability for the town would be way too high. So we're gonna continue to rent? Continue to rent. And then, um, regarding the, the cost for the pickleball, um, like you over, heard before with the M A S C training, um, hospitality tax, that would fall under that.
Okay.
Um, so, I have a resolution for the pickleball, if you want to transfer that to hospitality tax, that would fall under the hospitality tax funding, and then, we can't, because we had discussed, you guys had discussed and approved it to be done under ARPA originally. ARPA is now obligated fully for general funding, so that can be used for anything, hospitality can only be used for tourism. Pickleball will fall under the ARPA.
So do we have enough of the, um, hospitality to cover the pickleball cost?
Well, we got a donation to, um, get it painted, so it costs anything to paint it.
Oh, that's great, 'cause that was fairly expensive, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Timmy is gonna donate labor, and.
Yeah, Tim, the guy that built it, gonna give us the labor and the time, I told him I'd help him, and, um, we had a generous bank that made the money for the painting, so it costs us nothing to get it done.
So I wonder, the hospitality tax, is it just enough to cover the, um, the court, or is there anything that toward infighting or? Or is there anything to go toward fencing or anything like that?
Um, there's.
We've already got some benches, um, so I don't think we need to fence it, so the man was working on that.
She's also, I'm looking, she's, yeah, seeking for a grant to try to get fencing, so we won't have to use the hospitality money if she can get a grant.
I guess if we don't get the grant, do we, do we have enough to?
Oh, yeah, yes, yeah. Plus, this way, it'll leave the ARPA funding available in case the um S C D P S grant doesn't go through for the radios for the police department, because we'll need to use the ARPA funding for that. So then, um, you'll need to request a motion for that, for a resolution.
Okay, um, yeah, so the resolution for thought, um, authorization for the use of the hospitality tax, do I have a motion to pass that and be okay?
I make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Except it's on, what is the amount going to be on hospitality tax?
On your balance sheet in your financials. We just had it.
Forty-seven, zero four seven zero zero one?
No.
And the date before that?
It's seventy-seven thousand six ninety-nine thirty.
One more on page?
Seventy-seven thousand six.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, do we have any executive selection? I don't think we do any, I think everything's been handled. Y'all got any concerns? Any captain member got any concerns?
No, we're still working on on plans for the town square, but they're still up in the air.
Well, I got, I got one thing to report, the um the veterans' park. You know, there's a lot of veterans that died for all this to have our life to what we got now. So since day two that I've been in office, I've been trying to get a tap valve down there, so we can keep it pressure washed and cleaned and put flowers. And Mr. Victor done that for a long time, hauling water. So um I finally got on the phone until I couldn't talk no more, and I went to Conway and talked to the head man, and we got it done. So now we'll get a free tap valve at the the veterans' park, so it costs us eighteen dollars a month to have water there. So uh now get water, Victor, and he can uh carry you out. But that's all I got, and I, but I said I wanted.
You can retire your bucket.
I have still half of it by the time I got there.
By the time I got there, it was sloshed all out.
So, um, so they'll they'll do that, or you?
They they done it.
They've already done it?
Now, no, they're going till they put us on the order. In fact, they told us on Wednesday. So when they get the valve put in, um, then I'll have to get a trencher and I'll do it. I'll trench it over to the place where me and Victor gonna decide where we need to put it, at a box. So if you put, don't, if you just lay it out there, the hose, then kids will go play with it. So we'll put it in a box, so we can have a side out of mine and lock it up, so we can use it that way.
Is everyone good?
Yeah.
All right, then I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Sir?